Welcome to the April meeting for the Student Affairs and Special Programs Committee. I am pleased to welcome committee members and guests to this meeting. Everyone should have some form of electronic device in front of them to access the agenda and other supporting documents for this meeting. There are copies of the agenda as well on the tables. If you don't have paperless access, which I think, looking around the table, everyone does. There are two action items, two information items, and one disciplinary appeal before the committee. We're going to start with our information items. And with that, I'm going...
What information?
We're going to do this one first? Okay. So I'm going to turn it over to Senior Vice Chancellor Schaefer. And you will give notice through this committee, the City University of New York revisions to Article 16 bylaws. This revised policy will be presented as an information item at the board meeting on May 3rd, and then again for approval at the June board meeting.
Article 16.
Article 16.
Right. So this concerns Article 16 of the bylaws, which governs the college associations. And because of changes in New York state law, the associations must have, and other not-for-profits as well, must have two independent directors as members of the audit committee, which required adding such members to the boards of the college associations. That was the reason for this change and the major thrust. The associations' composition are quite minutely described and provided for in the board's bylaws. And they have for long been boards consisting of 13 members. When we first drafted it, we thought to add two outside directors appointed by the president. These would be people with some experience and expertise in financial matters such that they would be qualified to serve on an audit committee. Possibly alumni of the college or retired faculty members, I think, are the sort of two most likely categories of potential recruits for these positions. And then it sort of became a question of what other adjustments might be appropriate. The student representatives for the University Student Senate pointed out that the, these are associations that distribute student activity monies, and that the students had long been six of the 13 representatives and wished to remain in that same ratio. And we could have added two students to balance the two independent directors, but we all agreed that that would make the boards really too large. It's a little difficult to get quorums as it is. And so rather than add two students, we thought the appropriate adjustment would be to just reduce by one faculty member and one administrator from the board and leave the total number at 13. And that is what we have done and what we're going to propose to the board.
As the UFS representative, you're right. We should make it clear that we object to the reduction of faculty members on these boards. We don't think it's necessary as a fact of the matter. And we've suggested some alternatives to Vice Chancellor Schaefer. But on the face of it, reducing the number, this already small number of faculty, it's very small to begin with. If anything, it should be increased because the boards should have faculty input. The faculty members are not elected directly by the Senate, but they are appointed by the presidents, unlike the students who are elected directly by student associations. So that, we think that there are two defects here. One defect is the method of appointment. The faculty should be elected directly by the faculty senate or appropriate faculty bodies. And secondly, the number of faculty should not be reduced, or its proportion on these boards.
You know, I understand it involves some reduction in faculty representation. Obviously, the difference between faculty members comprising three out of the 13 members versus two out of 13 doesn't really fundamentally change the voting balance on these bodies. The idea of having these faculty members is to have faculty input on a faculty perspective. And I think having two faculty members will continue to achieve that. As to the method of faculty appointment, it has always been the case that faculty members, the past three faculty members were appointed from double that number of nominees provided by the college senate, the faculty senate. And that will continue to be the way of appointment. I don't really see that the reduction by one faculty member warrants changing what has been a longstanding policy is to have a faculty member disappointed. And so that is what we're proposing.
Yeah. I think I would do support the idea of a faculty to be appointed directly by the faculty governance body. In principle, these members should be part of, should be elected by their own constituents. In our case, we're elected by the students. Faculty should also be elected by their own faculty members. We do support the idea of having faculty being appointed by their own governance board.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, Rick. Is there, in terms of Mr. Ramonte's suggestion, is there a way within the bylaw that faculty can be appointed to these positions? Whether or not it's two or three faculty, but just the process of appointment? Is there any way to address that?
Well, there is a process of appointment. It has long been the case that the faculty senate nominates twice the number of seats, and the president selects from that. In the past, three out of six. Under this proposal, two out of four. And we don't see any reason to change that method of appointment. It was consciously and specifically done this way from the outset because of the greater student stake in the work of this committee. The methods of faculty appointment were different from student election, and we think it's appropriate to remain that way. And really, until today, I had never heard from either the faculty or student representative suggesting a change. But it seems to me that this method of selecting the members should continue as it has for many decades.
Needless to say, we disagree. The number of faculty, as it stands, is too small already. Three is a minimal number. If there are any changes, it should be changed to a higher number. If the number were to be reduced, then the method of appointment should be changed so that it's a direct appointment by the Senate. The presidents should not have the power to control which faculty members appear on these boards if that number is so small as to become, as Vice Chancellor Schaefer mentions, meaningless in a voting sense. The numbers of faculty are important because it's important to get a variety of, and a spectrum of, different opinions on these boards. It's not to control the board by voting. It's in order to get the opinions of faculty members onto the table as to how student monies are spent. It's not to control those. Reducing that number is deleterious to the functioning of these boards, and I think it should not be done.
So, just so that I understand, current way that it is now, the faculty senate already gives a pool of people to the president?
That's correct.
And then the president picks from those two, from that pool?
Right. Traditionally, the pool was six, and the president chose three. Under this proposal, the pool would be four. The president would choose two. And of course, the president has also given up one of his administrative appointments to this board in order to keep the number at 13, which we thought, and I think the students as well thought, was desirable to keep the number at that level.
So, your objection is that you wouldn't want the president to choose from that pool?
If there is to be the reduction, we do not want a choice from a pool. We would prefer to keep the current situation. We would prefer even more if under the current number of three, it would be direct election by the faculty governance bodies. We've accepted that reluctantly. We don't agree to that. We accept presidential control of which faculty members get represented with only the greatest reluctance. After all, the presidents do not choose which students appear on these boards. The students are elected directly without presidential selection. There's no clear reason why the faculty members should be so selected, despite the fact that this is practice of longstanding. But having the number be reduced is adding insult to the injury of the method of selection that we already have. We firmly oppose this.
I wasn't here 40 years ago when this was originally passed, but I imagine that the reason for the differing structures is that these are student monies being allocated for student purposes, in which student representation seems of a greater degree of importance in this structure. Obviously, there are many, many committees around the campuses where faculty elect their representatives. Here, the faculty input is valued, but the faculty interest is much less direct than it is for the students and than it is for faculty representation on faculty bodies. And that is, I imagine, was the rationale for having a different method of selecting the faculty. And we see no reason why the reduction by one faculty member in a 13-member committee should warrant a different method of selection.
Needless to say, we do not agree. We think the number of faculty should be maintained or increased, not in order to establish control. That's not what the faculty want. The students should be in a controlling voice. It's student money. But there should be faculty input, just like in any university. The faculty are important. Reducing the number of faculty says something about the perspective of how important the faculty are in this university. It says a bad thing. And in any committee, there should be faculty. When the faculty numbers are so small, the numbers should not be further reduced. They already are very small. And what was done 40 years ago with three faculty members was not done unwisely. We unwisely changed that number to a smaller number.
You also have something else? Currently, the boards are six non-student members and six student members and a chairperson, who could be the college president or the designated college president. If the interest is to be a student-centric board, in regards to having students, interest being the main concern here, we don't have a majority of students. It's a six-to-six, with the top breaker being the chairperson of the board. If the main interest was to be in favor of students, students would have a majority of seven and six. Right now, the president could be the chairperson or, again, a sign and designate. But the president also has veto power of student activity fee expenditures through Article 16 as well. So you give the president one, the top breaker vote, and also the veto powers, which is a double, I guess, double security net for college and university. But again, student activity fee money, we're paying for it. We're the ones suggesting that we're random to increase it or to keep it at a certain level. At the end of the day, the board has the right to approve the student activity fees. But again, it should be in principle that everyone has the vote. People who are on the board should be elected by their own constituents. Student activity fee is paid by students, and students should obtain at least the ratio that currently stands, or the majority.
So, go ahead.
Prior to these changes, then, students could override the president in the final decision? So this hasn't changed anything from the previous?
Look, people are sort of creating issues of principle where none exist. We're only changing this because the law requires two independent directors. And so we're trying to make a practical adjustment to that. Practically speaking, making the boards any larger would be unwise. And so with the addition of two independent directors and the desire to keep the number at 13, something had to give. It seemed like the practical and sensible solution was to remove one of the president's appointees and one of the faculty appointees in order not to diminish the student representation. Now, if the student representatives want to revisit the whole structure of these things, we can have a discussion about that at some other time. But by the June meeting, we have to make these changes in order to be in compliance with the law. And frankly, I don't think it's helpful to have suggestions thrown out at the 11th hour for other changes that one might have made when we're trying to reach a deadline to comply with the law and when, in prior discussions, no such recommendations or requests were made. So I think we should go forward, as we're required to do under the law with these changes. And if the faculty or the students want to have an ongoing discussion about the structure of these boards, we can have that when we're not under quite the same time constraints.
I'd like to point out that this is presented as a discussion item for a good reason. We're not voting on it yet. And the reason is so that we can discuss these issues and suggest changes. This would be a meaningless procedure of having a discussion item if it were improper or too late to suggest changes. That's why we are meeting, is to suggest changes. That's what we're doing.
So, Rick, how soon would suggestions need to be to you in order to make that deadline for us to be compliant?
Well, the board needs to, we need to present an information item to the board at the May 3rd meeting, and then they would need to vote on it in the June meeting. So, you know, I've heard the suggestions, and I've made my views unknown on them. Because I'm hearing them for the first time today, there's been no opportunity to consult with the presidents, who I'm sure have views on this matter, which I am perhaps imperfectly but in good faith trying to represent in my comments today. So, you know, we can have some further consultation. But I think that the issues that are being raised here really open up a whole other set of issues that had not been the intent as we tried to bring ourselves into compliance with the law without fundamentally changing the structure or size of this body. We could certainly continue to have those conversations.
I should point out that the last set of changes presented to the faculty were only a few days ago. And this was over the holiday weekend, and the opportunity for off-to-the-side discussions were not really present until today. This was the first day, Monday, after the weekend took place. So that the idea that we didn't present these suggestions earlier is specious. We were unable to do so.
Well, it depends who the "we" is, Sanford, because I did have a conversation with the chairperson of the faculty senate last week.
But I'm the representative at this table. So I receive no suggestions or discussions. So I can, I am willing on the side to make other suggestions, but I'm a little hesitant to do that here at this table.
So, this is the thing. You know, Sanford, you make a good point that this is a discussion item and it is a discussion. However, council's office, you know, is in a unique position to see, I guess, all of the legal ramifications around different scenarios that may or may not have been presented to him and to his office, and it may feel as though, you know, there are answers to unasked questions so far. I think that the only thing for us to do at this point is to open, you know, even for the smallest period of time, you know, for additional feedback. But keeping in mind that, you know, we will be compliant, you know, and we will not miss any deadlines, and this burden would totally be on, you know, the faculty and students, you know, if you have additional feedback for council's office, to do so in a very, very swift time frame.
We're perfectly happy. We're perfectly happy to engage in dialogue. But as I pointed out, the last change in the draft came at a time when we were unable to engage in such a dialogue.
Okay.
Even internally inside the UFS.
Okay. Rick, is that acceptable?
Sure. Always, always happy to hear feedback and, you know, consider other ways of approaching this problem.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to, actually, can we do your report after we do the voting items?
Absolutely.
This is an information item. We don't have to move on the...
No, it's just an information, we just did an information item. We're waiting for you because we can do this now. Okay, so we're going to go back to the action items. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, February 2nd, 2015?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, that passes. The second thing is the approval for the Graduate School of Journalism formalization of student activity fee. And I'll turn it over to Vice Chancellor Sanchez, who's going to provide us with an overview.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Foster. So, students at the Graduate School of Journalism have held a referendum to formally establish the continuation of a $50 student activity fee effective for fall 2015. A special referendum was held February 24th through March 1st, 2015, in accordance with University Bylaw Section 16.12, at a time other than in conjunction with student government elections. The vote on the referendum was 38 in favor and one opposed, with 31% of the eligible students voting on the referendum. The dean supports this fee. Just a reminder to representatives around the table, this is the Graduate School of Journalism, very small population of students. A $36.55 fee allocated by student government funds, a variety of extracurricular activities, programs, student clubs, social events, and educational conference attendance for graduate journalism students. An arrangement with the CUNY Graduate Center, graduate journalism students pay a $12 fee for healthcare services that provide them access to health and wellness services that are available to students at the Graduate Center. The earmarkings set forth in this resolution may only be changed by further board action. Yahara Castro, director, and Krista Noel, assistant director, and Cole Rosengren, student government representative from the CUNY Graduate School of Journalism, are here to answer any questions that you might have of this fee. They're over here. Any questions?
Sorry. Any questions? Okay. Great. Hearing none. May I have a motion? Yep.
So moved.
A second? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, that passes. And we're just going to stay with Frank here, and you're going to give us your report, please.
Absolutely. I have a number of items to share with the committee. Recently, I chaired the CUNY Cultural Passport Committee to discuss how the university can expand access to New York City's museums and cultural centers to CUNY students. The City University of New York, in collaboration with the Brew College Rubin Museum Project, will hold a working conference to explore ways to increase collaboration between CUNY through its 24 campuses and diverse cultural organizations across the city. The conference will be held on April 30th, 2015, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Shelly and Donald Rubin Foundations, the eighth-floor gallery and conference space located at 17 West 17th Street. On the athletics front, at the 2015 National Junior College Athletic Association, NJCAA annual meeting, the board of directors voted 44 to 9 in favor of repealing all bylaws that reference and enable the restriction of student athletes that did not participate or did not attend an American high school for at least three years. This action ends a long, two-year battle led by the CUNYAC and detractors across the country. Senior Vice Chancellor Schaefer and his CUNY legal team, along with State Attorney General Eric Schneiderman and his staff, should be commended for their efforts to have the bylaws repealed. One of the reasons why this work is so important for this university, and really the nation, is that by repealing and changing this established policy, this now allows for undocumented and international students in the NJCAA, across community colleges all over the country, to participate in intercollegiate athletics. This is just really tremendous work and a big change that the NJCAA has made as a result of our staff here at CUNY. And I'd like to certainly publicly thank Senior Vice Chancellor and the General Counsel for all the work junior staff have done. And please let's give them really outstanding work. Single stop offices are on track to open now that we have our single-stop operations across our community colleges. We are now planning to open and pilot at two four-year institutions, both at John Jay and City College, this coming fall. All of the vice presidents of Student Affairs have received a sexual misconduct brochure put together by the Central Office of Student Affairs as another way in which we can educate our students and our staff across our campuses. In student life, we had over 150 CUNY students attend the Black, Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian caucus in Albany. Students from the Malave Leadership Academy and CUNY Dreamers Coalition made 21 legislative visits supporting CUNY Student Services, budget priorities, and a tap for Dreamers. The annual Emerging Leaders Conference, organized by the CUNY Council of Student Life Directors, took place on February 20th at Medgar Evers College. Over 175 CUNY students attended. The CUNY Blackmail Initiative met with the Lumina Foundation recently to discuss how CUNY BMI can assist Lumina in achieving Lumina's goal, 2025, and has been asked to submit a proposal. On February 21st, the CUNY BMI, along with the New York Urban League Young Professionals, hosted the Civil Rights 2.0 at the CUNY School of Law. Veterans Affairs, CUNY has signed, recently signed, an MOU with NYC serves. The MOU will add CUNY as an educational resource in addition to the legal, medical, employment, and housing resources and referrals provided by NYC serves to all veterans and their families in New York City. With International Student Services, the university's recertification application has been approved by the Department of Homeland Security. This approval notification allows CUNY to continue admitting and enrolling international students in the F1 immigration status. Chairperson, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for, yes?
Just a comment. At my campus, I'm based at Lehman College. I'm referring to your comments on athletics in particular. At my campus, we had a presentation by Marty Sweran, who is Director of Athletics at Lehman. This was at a meeting of the professional staff congress of CUNY. He pointed out that the graduation rates of the people involved in the athletics programs are superior and higher, perhaps thanks to the mentoring and special treatment that athletics athletes get attention that they get from volunteers. This is in addition to CUNY's demonstrated success with ASAP, which President Obama has even mentioned. So I think it's something that CUNY might look at proudly as the success of our athletes in the graduation and in their academic endeavors.
I would agree. And if I could just comment, we recently studied specifically the graduation rates at our two-year and four-institutions, specifically with our student athletes. And actually, there's an in-focus document that highlights this, focusing on student athletes. And it showed a higher graduation rate for our two-year, four-institutions when compared, of our student athletes when compared to all of other students. The other kind of exciting trend we're seeing among our student athletes is that just over the last four seasons, we've seen a 40% increase in the number of our scholar athletes, students with a 3.3 and above, a 40% increase in just the last four seasons. And I think that's attributed to the good work of our directors of our athletic departments and the coaches, really emphasizing the notion of the... and the coaches really emphasizing the notion of the, of the student athlete, student first, athlete second.
Was there any... Oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I'm glad that Dr. Phillips brought this up. And, and also what, what we're seeing from the Vice Chancellor, we, we really ought to, I mean, with the NCAA, the, you know, NTI, and all, you know, all of this getting this type of attention, it's a nice opportunity for us to put a spotlight on, on some of these in terms of academics and, and scholarship. I, I think that we ought to just focus on that. It seems like that could be a really nice story that could be maybe even put in the subways and stuff, buses.
Was there any indication also, I mean, I'm sure the, the sports family, you know, is very supportive. Was there also any indication perhaps that our athletes may have been participating in any of our other programs that have been so successful?
No, that's a good question. We do know we've had a number of high-level scholars, Truman scholars, a number of Macaulay Honors students performing at a very high-level athletically. But we haven't looked at how many of our student athletes are in fact involved, like in the honors programs or special cohort programs? Would be interesting to look at.
Okay.
Terrific.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
No, thank you for your part.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, we're going to go into executive session to consider a student disciplinary appeal. Because these hearings and these cases are not open to the public, I'm asking everyone to, not everyone, committee members, all the committee members to remain, please.